Good evening. I'd like to call and order this meeting of the Lake Orion Village Council. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Call please.
President Van Porckley.
Here.
President Prokamnarch.
Here.
Councilmember Hobbs.
Here.
Councilmember Lamb.
Here.
Councilmember Luxinger.
She stepped out to the bathroom.
Councilmember Mantisson.
Here.
Councilmember Ruff.
Here.
President Van Porckley, we have a form.
Thank you. Okay. Presentations, item number four, we have none. Item five, call for the public non-agenda items. We'd like to ask that you limit your duration to three minutes. And I'll ask, I've got some cards up here. Do you have any of these, Susan, as well?
I pass those to you.
Okay. I have some cards up here of people that want to speak, non-agenda items. And I've got one from Ms. Reeva Beatty for non-agenda public comment. Hello.
Tonight I wanted to talk about the public drawdown. I just, there was a lot of concerns that I had with not having a lot of notice. According to my notes, on September 12th at the village hall meeting, it was announced that the drawdown was not going to happen. And this was also stated during several meetings throughout the summer that it was not going to happen and that it was being pushed off until season of 2023. On September 13th, the next day, on the DDA meeting, it was announced that the drawdown was in fact happening. This only gave us about 15 days' notice to have about 2,500-plus boats off the lake. And according to my math, it was about 200 boats a day. Now, looking at the lake now, we definitely made it. There was a lot of people that struggled. And there were some things that were affected with this. On September 21st, in the Orion Review, it announced that they were delaying, and this was five days before they were saying that it was happening on the 26th. This only gave us five days' notice that they were delaying it by three days. At this point, most of the boats were already off the lake. I just found that, and actually, on September 28th, I have a ruler outside that I've been taking notes each day with, and it had actually gone up an inch. And also note, the Orion Review stated that it would actually fully be down by October 17th. I don't see, judging by my ruler today, I don't see how that's going to happen. And with lining up contractors with such short notice has been nearly impossible. And this is my biggest concern. I have a limestone break wall. I have to make repairs this year. I've reached out to three contractors. I've not heard anything back. It just created a lot of stress and chaos, especially for the people doing haulers, or the people actually doing the hauling on this lake. Most of the lake is full of pontoons and they don't have trailers. So they have to contact a hauler. So the majority of these people are using the same four to five people. And it affects my tour business as well. I had 48 people that I had to reschedule for the month of October. This affected my business as well. I had a lot of people that were, some were very frustrated, and this put me in a bad place with my customers. Just a thought, moving forward, if you guys are redoing the website for the village, maybe think about saving on postage for the water bills and having a place where customer or all the residents could log in and pay their water bill online and make that a special place for announcements, just to save on postage. But that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have, I think this is probably a non-agenda item as well. Anybody else for non-agenda item?
Good evening. I'm so glad I could be here today.
Ms. Mosier, do you have a letter that you want to read?
Yes, I do.
Could I, could I interject a moment?
Yes.
We all, this board received that letter, correct? And I read it as well, and we all read it. The last three paragraphs are a solicitation for candidacy of your village council position. And if I could, council, do you have something you might be able to share with us on that?
Sure. Village facilities or equipment may not be used as a means of producing or disseminating to the community any materials that advertise or promote a political party or the candidacy of an individual for public office, as that would be contrary to the Michigan Campaign Finance Act. Thus, any, any statements by not only council but members of the public in village council chambers promoting the candidacy of a person for public office is prohibited. So any comments to that for anybody, whether the public or council as a whole, should be avoided at all costs so this council does not violate the CFA.
So my apologies, but that question was raised. That was new information just received. I just wanted to share with you if you might abide by that.
So that's the budget and water usage information?
Well, the budget and water usage information is being discussed at council level. You're welcome to repeat that. I believe
What is it you want me to, I'm not understanding?
Mr. President, if I may, I have read the letter. It appears that the last three paragraphs probably would be in violation of the CFA, so that would not be appropriate for public comment using village facilities. But the rest of it is, does not contain language promoting a candidate.
So you don't want me to comment on the increase in the water in the sewage and the amount it would cost per residence?
No, that's perfectly acceptable.
So what are the last three paragraphs? I'm confused.
The last three paragraphs?
You said the last three paragraphs. the first, if I'm looking at this, the
If we start it, I'm sorry to interrupt, if we may.
That's fine.
If, 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 the paragraph starting with if I and everything below that.
Well, it's saying I'm going to request. It's my request. So why is that not permissible?
It was just explained, to my understanding, by the council about the appeal of the candidacy and what you would do. I don't mind the other information, and I'm apologetic. But you're welcome to read the other information that we're already working on that you're explaining as well, if you'd like.
Okay, so I can't talk about my family? That's in the last three paragraphs?
That suggests the last three paragraphs.
Well, I would like to talk about my family and what we're paying. That's part of the last three paragraphs. So if you want me to not talk about if I'm elected, and not talk about that, I won't talk about it. But I do have a right to say what we're paying and how it is affecting us.
Well, I'd like to keep this as just public comment right now and not entertain it as a debate.
I'm not debating, I'm not debating it.
If you would like to bring it back as to the legalities of what you can and can't say, that could be another time.
Well, I'm going to read the letter. And thank you.
And we would like to ask that in violation of the MC, I believe it's A, sir?
Yeah, Michigan Campaign Finance Act.
Yeah, that you
Well, that can come out. I won't say anything about that.
The last three paragraphs, that's all.
Well, the last second, the second to the last paragraph is talking about me, if you look at it. So I can say anything I want to about my family?
Have at it. Let's go.
Okay. Okay. So our interim village manager, Wayne O'Neill, and our new village engineer, Carol Thurber, PE, have done something that the village council and past village managers have not been able to do for years. They have addressed the single most pressing infrastructure issue in our village and provided immediate and agreeable solution to all parties except the taxpayers. They have found funding and have prepared an action plan. I seriously applaud them for their efforts on our behalf. They have done three, in three months, what has been put off for seven years. I recommend that the village council keep these valuable assets to our village. The village council is selecting a new village manager, as we know, tonight, and I understand they're considering bringing back one of their previous hires. Unfortunately, we now have to pay for a new sewer system costing approximately $7 million, and we all will have to share in paying these costs. At this time, I can only estimate what amount we will pay through increased sewer and water fees. Estimate of bond cost and payment, $7 million borrowed for 20 years at 5% interest has an approximate yearly payment of $554,000. Three different ways to look at the, I'm sorry, approximate extra cost on our water bills. Increase per person, $554,000 divided by 3,000 residents equals $184 per person per year. Increase per parcel, $554,000 divided by 1225 tax parcels equals $450 per parcel per year. Increase cost per unit, $554,000 divided by $111,444 units per year equals $4.97 per unit. My 2021 water sewer bill totaled $1423.39 for 75 units. My future approximate additional cost will be $372.75 per year. That's a $26, 26% increase. If I, okay, I'm not supposed to read this one?
That would be the, where the council had suggested that would be inappropriate. And we have, and I apologize because
I would have appreciated some sort of a response today before I came up here.
I'm sorry. It was distributed at 4:00, I think you sent that today?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so I just found out about this myself.
Okay.
I don't even have the letter in front of me, quite honestly.
Okay.
Oh, that's the three
Well, I'm going to finish. My family, sorry, but I'm going to finish. My family had to save for our house, our children, and our future. It is time that the village saves money for our future. The election is November 8th, and there is a typo, and I apologize. It's time for a change. Please vote for the future of our village.
Allow that portion there. That's the violation of the Michigan Campaign Finance Act. Correct, council?
It's possible. That one's borderline, but that's why it suggested that at all costs, anybody avoid political comments that might
Okay.
Might support a candidate.
So thank you. Thank you for working with us.
I do have one other comment. So, Mr. President, since you asked if Councilman Michael Lamb and I are married, we are. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. I wasn't sure. That's why I had to ask. Okay? Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okay, we'll close the call to the public. I've got other cards here, but they're on the agenda items, and we'll look to have some input at that time. Moving on to the consent agenda, we have four items this evening. One of them is the engineers' report for the Village of Lake Orion financial commitments regarding critical infrastructure, which I'd like to pull and just read to the public as part of everybody knowing what's going on in our community. Item two, McKenna Planning and Zoning Monthly Report. Item three, approval of village council regular meeting minutes for September 26th. And number four, approval of village council special meeting minutes for September 30th. So I'd entertain a motion for the three, and then I will read the Village of Lake Orion Financial Commitments Critical, Regarding Critical Infrastructure.
Support.
All those in favor, please indicate with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. So we got a very good letter from our engineers, our new engineers, Noah K. Fraus. And I'd like to read this to you as a good heads-up on some of the needs in our community and the need to work together as a team going forward in many, many different ways. Honorable, honorable council members, this is addressed to Village of Lake Orion Financial Commitments Critical Infrastructure. As you are aware, the Oakland County Water Resource Commission maintains the Village of Lake Orion's sanitary sewer system. The original operating agreement with the Water Resource Commission, WRC, was signed in 1972, and an updated agreement was signed in 2019. As part of their services, the Water Resource Commission provides a report annually regarding the status of the sanitary sewer system. The WRC also obtained a stormwater asset management and wastewater, SOL, grant in 2015 to assess the sanitary sewer system, document assets, review revenue structure, and create a capital improvement plan. The final report was completed in November of 2018. In that report, it was reported that the sanitary pump stations were aging and in need of repair. The pumps are no longer manufactured, and repairs are difficult considering the pumps are no longer available. It was determined that they must be replaced. Additionally, there are some improvements necessary to the highest priority sanitary sewer gravity mains. The WRC presented the overall plan and needs to the village council in 2018 and again in July of 2021. The approximate cost of these improvements is $7 million. At this time, the improvements are not only necessary but become crucial. The WRC has indicated that they may terminate their maintenance contract and no longer provide the maintenance to the Village's sewer system if these repairs and updates are not completed. Our office, along with interim manager, DPW director Wes Sanchez, and village attorney Mary Kucherik, have met with WRC's legal and engineering team and have developed a plan of action that is satisfactory to both parties. The Village of Lake Orion will be applying for a Clean Water State revolving fund loan in the coming months. This loan is also the same funding as the Village of Lake Orion obtained for the Phase I and II water system improvements. Fortunately, with the current infrastructure funding, there may be principal forgiveness on a loan of at least 10% of the loan. We expect that the improvements will begin in the first quarter of 2024. With a loan closing in the end of 2023, we will submit an intent to apply prior to November 1 of 2023. Our intent with this correspondence is for the council to be aware of the financial obligations with these now required improvements. The village has already incurred a $6 million revolving fund loan from the water system improvements completed in 2019, and must now also commit to an additional $7 million in loans. These expenditures are necessary for the critical infrastructure of the village. It should also be noted that the village had also intended to complete the Phase III and IV water main improvements through the revolving loan program, approximately $6.5 million. However, these projects have been put on hold temporarily in order to address the critical sanitary sewer improvements. We recommend that the village manager and financial team review the village's financial commitments and advise the council regarding financial commitments, both present and future. So that's the letter from our engineers. It's what we have been discussing here and there. We're looking for solutions for our pump stations and additional infrastructure improvement. These also are some of the discussions that are happening on a broader scale with, such as our DDA and their efforts, our two committees, joint DDA and, and village council that are looking for support that they can share in this as well. So more to come, but I wanted to share that letter.
And since that was brought down, Mr. President, I'll make a motion to receive and file the Noah K. Fraus letter dated October 6, 2022, regarding financial commitments regarding critical infrastructure. Support.
All those in favor, please indicate with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you very much. Moving on. Moving on to approval of the agenda, there's no new items other than what's listed. I'll look for a motion to approve. I'm sorry, you have your raised hand.
Excuse me, I'm just requesting that, I'm hearing from some people back here that they're having trouble hearing, so if you please be sure tonight when you speak, all of you, you can speak into your mic so that everyone can hear what this Steve said. Thank you.
Move to the agenda.
Support.
All those in favor, please indicate with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. All right. Public hearings. Public hearing and consideration of commercial rehabilitation exemption certificate number two for West Village, 55 West Elizabeth Street pursuant to Michigan Public Act 210 of 2005. Mr. O'Neill, is there anything you'd like to start with this, or should we just have the presenters step forward?
I have the village attorney, and there's somebody from the audience, from West Village.
Okay. So who'd like to start first?
I will, Mr. President, if you want. In your packet included is a comprehensive letter from me indicating the criteria that this council would review and determining whether or not to grant or deny the request. Just with regard to the first A through D criteria regarding the qualified local government unit, commercial rehab district, commercial property and rehab, those first four criteria really already observed and determined because those were the criteria for establishing the district that this council heard some time ago. So really, starting on page two, you have the criteria that the statute requires to consider whether or not to grant it. I will indicate that we did provide proposed resolutions, both to deny and to grant. Both of those resolutions would need to be appropriately revised based on whatever findings this council might decide after tonight's hearing, public hearing, and deliberation on the matter. So those are, and there should be red, red areas in those proposed resolutions where we would have to fill in the blanks or choose from certain options in those resolutions. So just keep that in mind, and hopefully we laid out the criteria that you would consider in either granting or denying the request. And I'll leave it to the applicant to explain to you how they believe they're, they meet all the requirements.
Thank you. West Development, gentlemen?
Good evening, everyone. Members of council, council president, certainly staff, members of the public. Matthew Gibb, 930 Lakewood and Orion Township, for the record, for your good clerk. This council's been well aware of the project for some time. Ms. Ruff smiling, she's like, please don't go through it again. The project, just in quick synopsis, is on track. It involves a historic preservation. Watching the dialogue in the community in recent months, I know that that is an important topic for some. For us, it's a certainty, meaning we're going to preserve the building and do the restoration of the building, but we're going to put 29 apartment units loft-style within the building and build the rest. We're staying within the ordinance, as been prescribed at prior meetings, limiting this project to 89 units, which is the maximum that's allowed under the ordinance. We didn't seek variance from that. We didn't seek an extension or increase of the unit count. And so the project is, as has been described many, many times to this council. Tonight, we're here following the public hearing to create the district. This council did find that there was criteria that would be purposeful to create a district to allow the application for an exemption certificate. And what that means for the tax-paying community, myself included, is that we're seeking an abatement of the taxes that would be charged, that would be in addition to those that are currently and presently paid. The way a Public Act 210 abatement works, or an exemption certificate, as it's called under the law, is that we're currently, the property currently has a value, and when this practice is completed, it will have a value, and the taxes that are increased as a result of that reassessment, assessment are what are abated. We're asking that the abatement be for 10 years. It is allowed under the statute. And the reason for that is we are making progress, but the project continues to be very tenuous from a financial standpoint. While the developer is putting in a substantial amount of their own equity into the project, they've already put in well in excess of $1 million just in this preparatory work for the project itself. Interest rates have gone from under 3% to over 7% in the time that it's taken us to get to this stage. I know that's not your problem. It's not the public's problem, but it certainly creates a hardship ongoing, and so we're hopeful that this council tonight would consider the exemption certificate for approval. We've said many times that the state of Michigan is seeking to participate in this historic preservation for the village. They are. They have tentatively approved an additional contribution from the Michigan Strategic Fund through the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. As we've said many times, those awards are contingent by their rules and by the laws in the state of Michigan and the MBDC. It requires a local contribution. So what would that be? We've said many times that we would seek what would be the minimum contribution that we could see that would allow us to do the historic preservation and move forward. It's not the lengthy pilot program that a low-income housing project would be. It's not the obsolete Property Rehabilitation Act that would be an onerous burden. We're not seeking a transformational brownfield, which would take everyone's taxes, including the schools and the library. We're asking for a commercial rehabilitation certificate that would be 10 years, and again, abating only those taxes, not schools, and not, and not, not the school taxes. So that being said, the criteria, I wasn't privy to your good council's letter. I have significant respect for him, so I kind of have a sense of what he did and laid out. Not being privy to it, I think the key element is the eligibility for the certificate itself. We've said many times in the past that that really renders an analysis as to the building being previously used in some commercial fashion. Commercial fashion, as we set forth in our application, which you've had now three or four different occasions from your prior manager to this one, is broadly construed. In this project, and even speaking to members of the public today, I was reminded that the Boys and Girls Club held operations there. We've had uses in that building that include psychiatrists and other nonprofit organizations. The broadness of the scope of the use of the building, from being a scope to those ancillary uses, certainly render it different than the purely residential use or others that might not be eligible under this particular statute. So we believe that this is very eligible. Quite frankly, given everything that's been stacked up, it has been asserted to this council many times by myself, Mr. Westberg's here as well, if there's specific questions of the developer following the public hearing. This project has been very carefully put together with the assistance of not only this village, but with the National Trust for Historic Preservation and its rules, with the representatives of the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, the Community Revitalization Program. We're very, very close. This is the last element of putting together all of those efforts to move forward, and we're hopeful that you'll consider that, the full abatement. With that, I'll be quiet. You've heard all this before. We're here following the public hearing, either then or at the time of consideration to answer any more questions.
So, Mr. Gibb, this is noted as So, Mr. Gibb, this is noted as commercial rehabilitation exemption certificate number two. Correct?
That's the way your council has put it together. I'm assuming that's because you have one more in the village, but I would defer to your council.
Mr. President, that is correct. We have one prior, so this would be number two.
Okay. So having said that, is that the end of your presentation?
For now, it is subject to answering any questions, unless there's questions now through the, through the, through the chair.
Well, and we're going to open it up. This is a public hearing that we're going to do, so we'll open that up to the public. And this is intended to just have the consideration of it being designated as a commercial rehabilitation exemption possibility.
Right. So for the benefit of the public, Chairman Van Fortfleet, there's two processes in approving this, and I know you know this, but just for the benefit of those that are coming for the first time. So the first one is a public hearing on whether the land or the real estate around this area would be considered a district. And that district says that the council said, you know what, we need to do something in the district that would consider that, whether these types of certificates should be issued, and so you granted a resolution to create a district. All that does is give an opportunity for a group like ours to come in and ask for the second step, which we're here tonight. That's asking for a certificate of exemption. And what that means is, if approved, you're saying, we agree to exempt a certain collection of taxes on the property. It doesn't exempt everything. It exempts those, it does not exempt the taxes that we're already paying on the property.
But that portion is later in our agenda.
Later in the agenda. The public hearing, though, is on whether you would grant that exemption certificate. That's what the public hearing is.
So I'm going to open it up to the public. Is there any question, well, public first. Open it up to the public. I've got a few names here on the cards, such as Mr. Breslin. You wish to comment on this West Development project.
Thank you. So since this, the inception of this proposal, myself and others have asked questions pertaining to what the impact of this would have financially through taxes, putting aside for the moment all of the inconvenience of the construction and the traffic and all of that, but the hard costs in terms of tax burden that will fall upon the tax-paying residents of the village. And I never did receive an answer for that, and I was under the impression that was being looked into. So I still don't know what that answer is, although I can add to the list here, the $7 million for a sewer pump, that if I understand correctly, for the tax abatement, they would be exempt from participating in, other than the use tax of the water. So does that represent a burden on the taxpayers that are going to have to carry their weight while they're not paying taxes for 10 years?
Mr. O'Neill, I believe you've put together some information on that, have you not?
Well, basically, they're not exempt from fees that are, that are charged. This is only on the increased taxes that would be paid on the increased taxable value that they're putting in.
Correct. Absolutely.
The rest of it would remain the same.
Right. So the use fees, they understand that, but the tax burden that the rest of the residents in the village will be paying, they will be exempt for, from, for 10 years.
Well, there's not a greater burden on the rest of the taxpayers, it's just they're not paying the portion of the taxes on the increased valuation.
Well, the $7 million divided by the number of tax-paying parcels, isn't that how that math works?
Mr. President, I'm going to call a point of order. Again, public comments to the chair. Chair O'Neill, it's really not time for debate.
Thank you.
Certainly, if council wants to ask questions of staff that are brought up by members of council, they certainly have the opportunity to do so, but...
Yep. Sorry, sir, that's my, my error. Your comments are to be directed to me, and will add that, or the council can, in their debate to follow.
Okay. So I guess, is there a simple yes-no answer to that? Is that something that, that can be quantified? And, and again, that's, that's, that's been one of the things that has really seemingly been not highlighted. You know, putting aside the, all the controversy about the DDA and where the money's going and all of that, I'm just looking at the hard costs of what this means, in addition to all the other turmoil that will result from this. I'm curious to, to what, what impact that's going to have on us.
We'll look for that in debate.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Reard. Tax abatements.
Well, I'm on a couple of things here. So I believe from what I was told when I was attempting to obviously get a tax abatement, that you can't ask for it until your part is totally complete and your contract is signed. And that's what was what Joe Young told me at the time, because I went through this for almost a year, and I was told that, by Mr. Young, that you had to have everything, all your Ts and Is dotted and Ts crossed before you can ask for that part. So I may be incorrect, but that's what I was told.
Thank you, sir. And Mr. Childers, sir.
My name is Jim Childers. I live at 197 West Flint Street. I've lived in Lake Orion since I was five years old. I live in the same house I live in now since 1959. I went to Blanch Sims. I graduated from Lake Orion High School in the class of 1967. This building over here that we're hoping to save was my junior high, fifth and sixth grade downstairs, seventh and eighth upstairs. I have a real soft spot in my heart for that building. We are losing so much history in this village through other developments. The marina is right behind my property, so if you want to talk about construction, upheaval, I will be experiencing that myself at some point. I'm resolved that that is going to happen, and I'm okay. Can't stop progress. Saving this building will be major progress for this village and will restore a building, not tear something down. It will restore a building that has been a part of this community since time immemorial. I would hope you would make the right decision that will benefit this community and keep history a part of it.
Thank you, sir. That's the cards I have. Mr. Stevens, sir.
Harry Stevens, 311 North Shore. Time and time again, I've spoken to this council about my abhorrence of tax abatements. This building that I also, I started in kindergarten and went to school throughout there, is an old building, was built in the 1920s, filled with asbestos with a steam heating plant. That's been known by the general population as well as the West Company from day one. It's going to take significant rehabilitation to do that, and I applaud them for the attempt to do so. But at the cost of tax revenue to the village, I have a problem. In this particular situation, we have the school itself, which is in tough shape, but very pleasant to look at. But we have another piece of the property that is to be developed. If there were to be an abatement, which I still don't agree with, I think it should only go with regard to the historical element, namely the school, that there should not be an abatement for the new properties. Those properties, or the new buildings, could be built on any piece of real estate within the community, and it doesn't have to be rehabilitated. That's a hill, it's been there forever, it's not a brownfield, it is a piece of naked property, and there should not be an abatement on that element. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other? Yes. Mr. Schmidt, sir.
Jeff Schmitz, JS Capital, 120 South Broadway Developer. I wanted to speak on behalf of some of the petitioners and some of the residents that wanted to talk about this tax abatement. So on the two tax abatements that have been brought before you, I assure you, at the Eman Center, if nothing happens, nothing will get done. That building will deteriorate. And to the, you know, the residents who say that, as a developer, you know, we're taking away, and I have no skin in the game on either one of these developments, but if you say that we're taking away tax revenue from the village on any of these issues, you're, you're asking about tax revenue that doesn't exist today. So what happens, because as a developer who's developed 4 million square feet of real estate my lifetime, when you go in for these tax abatements, you will pay the same tax revenue that that property is currently paying today. It's paid last year, the year before, and the years to come, if nothing happens. The great thing about it is, and, and some of you gentlemen talked about graduating from Lake Orion High School, you're not exempt from the increase in taxes for the school system. So your school taxes will double or triple, or whatever they may be, in accordance with the value of your asset. But what you're not capturing from a village is the increased value. So your school taxes as a developer are going to go up, but your, your base taxes to the village and the county are going to stay stagnant for 10 years. But I assure you, as a developer, if you do nothing and give nothing to these people that are trying to develop assets and make the community better and more vibrant, I assure you those buildings will sit there vacant for the next 30 years. Because as a developer, you do not understand what we go through when interest rates are going to 8%, and your cost to buy a gallon of milk is $8, and a 2x4 is $14. So if you're okay with letting that piece of real estate deteriorate year after year after year, then don't vote for it. But when you look at the most successful communities in Michigan, Traverse City, Royal Oak, Rochester, do you disagree with those? They all have strong DDAs which promote these incentives that go forward. That's all I got to say.
Anyone else? Okay. At this point, the intention was just to hold a public hearing on this item. No action needed. If there's no additional public comment, we'll close and move on in the agenda. Item nine. Items for consideration. Invoice approval. October 11, 2022 invoices for approval along with credit card statement. Mr. O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Josh Johnson, our Finance Director Treasurer, is here to answer any questions that you have. I've taken a look at the invoices and don't find anything unremarkable.
I move to approve the bills in the amount of $136,469.77, of which $7,567.09, our DDA bills for a net total of $144,036.86. Approve or payment along with a credit card statement of $3,044.76 to receive and file.
Support. Scott, any questions, challenges? Are there any? Roll call, please.
Hopps.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Luxinger.
Yes.
Nurse.
Yes.
Van Fortfleet.
Yes.
Matheson.
Yes.
Rutt.
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you. Item two. September financial statements. Mr. O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Again, this is your activity report for September. I've reviewed it. I don't find anything remarkable. Hopefully, the audit is going to be presented to you in November for the last year. You can use that to compare with this, to see exactly where you're at financially, and we will have additional information, should it be needed, so that you're up to date.
Thank you. Entertaining motion?
I move to receive and file the financial reports for September 2022.
Second.
Questions? Challenges? I just want to mention that in discussion with the village manager about the overall fund balance, because we're talking quite frequently about money, and this is part of that. This is our review. Is in June of this year, at the end of the 2122, we had a growth in our general fund of $55,000. And if I look at all net of revenues and expenditures and our all funds, total revenues of all funds, and Josh, you might even, you supplied this report, there was a, in 2122 the year, balance was 450 net of revenues and expenditures, 456,000 is the number that I got from your report as well. Little bit different than the first fund balance, the general fund, but we're working the best we can to watch the money. All those in favor of accepting the financial reports, please indicate with a "aye."
Aye.
Aye opposed. Thank you. Okay. Item B, number one. Application for exemption certificate for West Village, 55 West Elizabeth Street. Mr. O'Neill, would you like to kick this off again?
Again, this, this I would refer to the village attorney. He has been intimately involved with this for the last several months, going back to 2021, so I refer to Mr. McCoskey.
Mr. President, thank you. As, as mentioned earlier, you have correspondence. I've attached not only the statute, but the simplified version from the state, summary sheet, and a question and answer. Based on that, obviously, council's urged to consider all those elements outlined in the letter and in those correspondence, and whether or not to grant the exemption certificate requested for. And if you grant or deny, again, we will probably need to discuss the, the, fill in the blank parts of the relevant proposed resolution. And, and I kind of propose a question to start. Did you get both proposed resolutions? You just got the one. So if it turns to a denial, I, I can make some quick copies for, for council's preview. I, I just noticed that this morning, and I don't think we had enough time. But just so you're aware, we did provide both, both versions of a resolution, not knowing which direction council was going to choose to take.
I would like to, Mr. Gibb, do you have anything you'd like to say from the developer side? Now is your opportunity again. You were talking about it earlier, about the money. In our brief, because we haven't said this to the public, it says here, our summary sheet, "Village Council has established a commercial rehabilitation district for the property located at 55 West Street. West Village is now applying for exemption certificate under Public Act 210 for 55 West Elizabeth Street. Summary of previous council action, on July 25, the Village Council had a public hearing and passed a resolution 2022-032 establishing the commercial rehabilitation district number two for 55 East Elizabeth Street at the September 12, 2022 council meeting. We just did a public hearing, now we're looking at the exemption certificate. Financial impact is approximately 50,000 to 60,000 annual tax abatements." Correct?
Well, I can confirm, but that would be a, an average over the 10-year period. So it wouldn't be necessarily $53,000 immediately because of the way the project would get assessed, but you're correct. That, that amount would be restricted from the DDA budget, because currently the property's in the DDA.
Okay. And that's a 10-year program?
It's a 10-year program. That's correct.
Okay. All right. So...
Well, I'm, I'm going to offer up, get the debate started. So I'm going to recommend a motion to adopt the resolution number two, or 2022-042, approving the application for exemption certificate for West Village, 55 West Elizabeth Street.
Second.
Typically, what we would do is we'd offer in this some more additional public comment if need be. We already heard from the public on this earlier, and I would, go ahead, Mr. Nurse.
And with that, I mean, I made the motion, right? But I also wanted to comment, I listened to all the comments, everybody, both sides. I've had an optic over the last 38 years of watching that building and watching that property, policing it, keeping drug use out of it, potential arson from inside of it, people breaking into it, the constant crime, the constant vandalism. And I look at it as an old car that we've had as a community, sitting out front, we've had a for-sale sign on it. And this is, as Mr. Schmidt spoke as a developer, so here's a piece of property with a historic building sitting out there... sitting out there for 30 years, and everybody just drove by. Nobody stopped. We had a couple stop and inquire, but nobody really wanted that old car. Nobody kicked the tires. We finally got a very reputable developer on historic property come in, and that's kind of my belief as well, is there's got to be a big dog in the hunt for me to want to offer that tax abatement. And in this case, this historic preservation of our original school and our high school, I think is priceless. Not only that, as stated, we're not losing all of the tax base that's there. That will continue. And not only will that continue, we will increase our water usage and those fees that will come into the village. People will move in here who will buy products downtown. They will live and work in the village quite possibly. You're increasing exponentially those incomes back into our community. And I've watched developments for the last 40 years that have been good for us. And I think this is the prime example of that, and I really express that desire to see this blighted property improved.
Thank you. Any other additional comments? Mr. Lamb?
Thank you, Mr. President. So over the last several years, I've been driving around the village and talking to the people. And most of the people I talk to don't care about the high school. My high school was torn down and turned into a gymnasium. It's a beautiful building. Most of the residents I've talked to could care less about the high school. They don't want to spend a half a million dollar in tax revenues to support a developer to make a lot of money off the project. I think Mr. Stevens was correct in saying that when we come in and ask for 100% tax abatement for 10 years, and we can't do the project without that money, and then we pay a million dollars for a piece of property that costs $51,000, and then we have three $40 million projects along the lake shore, I'm not seeing the desperate need for a tax abatement. I'm still trying to figure why the tax abatement was issued for the four-story building downtown, why there's a four-story building downtown on, you know, one of the nicest sites in the village. So, you know, I'm not, the labor of the point. So I totally do not believe these people are eligible under the law. I mentioned that to council before, and I don't believe that the village residents want to give any tax abatements. I understand the developer is a high-quality development firm and that will do a good job. But me and my people don't see it that way. So that's my opinion. I have a few more comments. Those whole processes are very deceiving and deceitful to the residents. We go through each stage, and the developer comes and makes a presentation, and then we, you know, we create a special district. And then, you know, everybody's blah blah, and then we create a application process, then we create a certificate. And then in the end, we have a vote, and they get their 10-year, 100% tax base. Yeah, I'm willing to bet that that's what they're going to get. So I feel the grease under the skids, and I don't support that.
Thank you. Ms. Rutt?
I think it's important to note that the village is not actually spending money when granting a tax abatement. We are simply not collecting or whoever, you know, wherever that money goes, they're not collecting for the 10 years. We're not spending any money. And I think it's also important to note, as Mr. Narsh said, that it's been sitting there vacant for years. If it doesn't get developed, we're still only going to be collecting the current taxes that are happening right now. So five years from now, is it going to be developed? I suspect not. Seven years from now, is it going, 10 years from now, when, you know, all the taxes will be captured, will it be developed? I suspect not based on history and how long that property sat there. So we're abating for 10 years for a future long-term gain. And I just don't see the logic in saying, no, we're not going to do that, when it's a project that so many in the community does support the historic preservation. We've heard for weeks now, historic preservation, historic preservation. Well, we have people who want to do historic preservation, and then just to say, oh, no, well, short-term, we're not going to get the money. So we're not, we're going to say, no, well, we're not going to get historic preservation, and we're not going to get the taxes long-term. So it just doesn't make sense for me to deny it without any future prospect of additional revenue in the next 10 years. Nobody's lining up and knocking on the door for that property to develop it.
Anyone else? Mr. Hobs?
Let me put it in my simple mind here. So if it gets the abatement, nothing's lost to the village. In the long run, after the 10 years, we start getting taxes off it, right? Okay, so that's how I'm thinking. And the Westvale project down in Pontiac, I've seen the Strand Theater, and if anyone can pull it off, they can. So, you know, I'm for it.
Anyone else?
I have a couple of comments and questions, sir. I believe that school has said it's blighted property for all of about 35 years now.
That's correct.
I have witnessed, I'm going to take a guess at this, but probably five to seven efforts to do something with that property, whether it's different owners or development considerations, and nothing has happened. And its path is to remain as blighted property. And the people I talk to are asking that we do something with it. And these are people that have attended there or haven't attended there, are just looking for the betterment of the community, even such as Mr. Torrey, who is a neighbor across the street. He has been in here a number of times and made statements to that effect as well. Do something with the building. There's no deception or deceit here in the intent of what to do with this property. There's no previous greasing of the skids. This is just trying to make the best decisions for the community. So I have a couple of questions regarding that. So $50,000 to $60,000, you made the statement the minimal amount required for participation with the MEDC. The thing I keep thinking about is the Michigan Economic Development Council says, "Look, in order for us to assist you, the developers, with this property, we need to have buy-in from the community." Accurate?
That's a requirement, yes.
Absolute requirement. If we say no tonight, you don't get assistance in your financing from the MEDC. You are cold. You're out there with no assistance, correct?
That's correct. And if I could, Chair, I would add to that, that that financing is required to secure all of the other financing, including their own personal equity that the firm is putting in to make that happen. It's no different than when you buy a house, you have to have a certain amount of your own equity. In order to close on that, we're in the same position here. Every dollar that the MEDC is pledging is coordinated with the dollars that we're asking here to complete the total construction. And I would note for you and the public and the rest of the council that this is all originally based upon the estimate of this being approximately $21 to $22 million of total investment cost for the project, because, as Mr. Schmidt said, developers are now facing the fact that when we started this, construction materials were at a certain cost, but particularly the cost of building something, including wage and labor. This is probably more likely $26 or $27 million of total investment cost. And so you're very accurate. These dollars are very, very structured in the way that if this is not able to help participate with the MEDC, it is impossible that any developer would be able to develop this property.
Right. You're the owners of the property. Pack up, go home, figure out something else, maybe sell it.
Maybe. Last time it went to the state land bank, which is why it ended up being disposed of like it was.
Okay, now the question. $50,000 to $60,000 a minimal amount. Where does that come from? How is that derived?
So as has been said many times, Ms. Rutt, I appreciate your analysis as well on this, is that that amount is from the increase in taxable value of the property. So right now, the property is worth a certain amount of money. There's taxes that are being paid. There's a very minimal amount of other fees that are being paid to the village because the property is obsolete and has been rendered in a blight status for quite some time. That increased value is where that taxable amount comes from. So if the increase in value goes up a million dollars, then you would pay the village rate to the village based upon that million dollars of increase. So as the project is built, all the taxes are held, just like it would for any project. But then as it's reassessed once it's completed, whatever that increase in value is, that's the portion that's abated. So the base still gets paid. And picking up on a point that Mr. Narsh made, we submitted in our application materials, and very important for the public to recognize this, that we had a very detailed statement of economic impact. It's one thing to say that the village is not going to collect that increase in valuation for a period of 10 years. It's much more significant to say that if this were to be turned down, that the village is not going to collect the economic impact, which when you have 89 market rate units in a place like the Village of Lake Orion, the economic impact, as all of you know, my prior job was to know these numbers very, very clearly, is somewhere in the tune of $280 million over the life of this abatement, which for the public might sound, oh, it's a developer making up numbers. We look at the average incomes that would go into these units. We look at the cost of the units that people are paying in rents, the rents that the market would demand, and we multiply that into a factor that's very clearly identified. So you're losing $50,000 or $60,000 of currently uncollected, and quite frankly, if the project can't go forward, never collected revenue, in exchange for the economic impact that would drive. And I would say, I applaud how the village has been handled and the way that it's grown with very good stewardship. I've lived here now 30-plus years, which many people would say, oh, you just moved in. Seeing it grow, seeing Mr. Schmidt's project and other, that's the residual impact of economic development and impact. When you bring income into your community, you do it in a very smart and steward-like way. This project is going to bring far greater impact to you and your budget in the years to come than the minimum amount of taxes that you will be not collecting as a result of the increased value.
You stated $280 million over 10 years. $28 million a year in economic income, or people are going to be living here, eating here.
People buying other houses. The construction impact alone, the first year and a half, there'll be close to 190 construction workers that will be on site. When you bring those type of people into a community, there is a residual economic impact. It's not the only selling factor for why this should happen. You've pointed out several, but it's significant. Those are the things. When the General Motors plant was preserved in the south end of this town, the economic impact of that was immeasurable. Doing these types of projects, particularly historic preservation project, where you are keeping the integrity of the community, it's immeasurable almost.
And at the MEDC level, the historic preservation, that's huge, the need there for our participation for you to obtain that.
Well, I would note, for the benefit of your good counsel, has pointed out that for the purpose of a resolution that would say, what is the eligible criteria? There's three real key criteria here that are under the statute. One of them, as you pointed out, Village President Vanportfleet, that the property has been vacant and obsolete for greater than 15 years. And when you have a situation, it creates one element of eligibility. The next one, very significant under the statute, that it involves direct historic preservation in the community. We have checked two of the major boxes of the statute, not of the, well, should we do it? It's two major eligibility boxes. The third box that checks us here is that will there be improvement to public infrastructure? Well, we've already made it very clear that we're going to not only be improving the localized utility system for the project, but the roadways are going to be improved, the off-street parking that will be improved by paving, marking, curbing, lining. All of those things that will surround the project are all significant eligible elements of a public act 210 application. And so those three factors of eligibility render this completely eligible under the law. And I would encourage you to include that in your record if you're inclined to approve a resolution.
Ms. Rutt?
Just a quick, for clarification, with Mr. Narsh's motion, does he have to also, where it's red in here, include, or pick the option, because there are options on the resolution?
Correct. And I think it would be appropriate for council to maybe debate those, and then Mr. Narsh can maybe amend his motion to include what options.
Okay, I was going to ask, would that be a separate motion after it's enacted? Because if we, if I include them in the motion, and we haven't passed it yet, then we're including such as under the whereas, option two, would these be two motions or one?
I think you can do it in one, but if you're more comfortable doing it in two, there's nothing wrong with that.
I'm wondering how it could be done in two. If it says to adopt the resolution, if the resolution isn't complete, how do we?
Exactly. Usually, these things, you have the public hearing, have the debate, then come back with a proposed resolution, kind of. Because you do have, I think, statute provides 60 days from the date of the public hearing. The attempt was to move it along because it did get delayed for this public hearing, and they want to move forward as fast as possible. So we were trying to shoot from the hip, so to speak, to give you the tools to possibly consider a motion. So if maybe you want to amend your motion...
And I will amend my motion, and the next question is, are we going to read in my amended motion the entire? Or are we going to make those, and if so, I'll, if we're making those, I'll bring up to this body for debate. The first section in red is option one, option two, and option three. I'm proposing option two in my motion.
Okay.
In addition to my motion, I would ask the development is part of, is the Village of Lake Orion requires that the rehabilitation facility shall be completed by? I got to put a date. I want a date.
You had a timeline of October 2024. Was that correct?
The completed by.
It's already October. Yeah, a year from now, October 24.
I would say December 25.
December 2025? Okay.
No, it's 26.
That's 26 months. I think we can go faster than 26.
Yeah, just in case.
Oh, all the developers in the crowd are saying we're waiting 80 months for switchgear. So if we could put December 2025 as our anticipated full completion date, then that would be reasonable.
And I've got that, and for the purpose of amending my motion, I'm including the top of page three of three, all those sections in red, to include increased commercial activity, create employment, retain employment, prevent a loss of employment, revitalize urban areas, or increase the number of residents in the community. And in addition, the now, therefore be it resolved, I would include that for a period of 10 years, beginning December 31st, 2022, and ending December 30th, 2032. And that would conclude...
If, Mr. Chair, if I can just have a point of order, maybe even include your good counsel. So, Mr. Narsh, typically, the way that an abatement would structure from the dates, and those dates might be from our original application, is you would time the beginning of the abatement period at the end of the construction cycle. Now, you have discretion over when you want that to start. If you were to say that we would time this so that it would start at the beginning of 2025, instead of at the end of 2025, that's your discretion. But if you start it right now, then we would lose the benefit of almost three years of the abatement, which changes substantially what we've been working on at this date.
So the intent is to have the abatement start at the completion of the project?
At the completion of construction.
So then I would amend...
Well, Mr. Chair, I...
Well?
Counsel?
I'm sorry to interrupt, Mr. Narsh. Need to double-check that because I'm not sure the statute provides for that. If I could have a moment to look at the statute, because the audit said that once granted, it has to commence the December 31st of the year that it's granted. So if I could just have a moment to find that language, and I could be wrong. And I understand their request, but we got to follow the statute, so...
Ms. Rutt has another question, Mr. Gibb.
Sure.
Yeah, I'm looking at the timeline. It was provided for us on packet page 70. And so just wondering if this is still an accurate timeline. So it says September 22, 22, government approvals, October 22, finance approvals, December 22, finance closing, April 23, start construction, October 23, start pre-leasing, July 24, construction completion, October 24, complete lease-up. Is that still the targeted timeline?
And I apologize, we didn't amend the application again. That was the application that we submitted back in May under your prior manager. that we submitted back in May under your prior manager to move forward. So really, all of those timelines, you would just move probably five months. So we're here, hopefully, to get government approval at this step, finance approval then would likely be January, which is a little bit quicker than than we might think. Of course, you then winter, construction timing ramp up. So I would just push that whole timetable back five months, and that really pushes to Mr. Narsh, what you just said, is a construction completion.
Would it be fair to include, would it be possible to include language at this piece of the resolution to simply state that the 10-year period would start and end based on the guideline of the statute? And therefore, we don't have to research that this evening? And if that would be fair to all parties, if we're meeting the law?
I found it.
You found it? Okay.
Except as otherwise provided in Section 8.4, which we'll look at in a second, the effective date of the certificate is the December 31 immediately following the date of issuance of the certificate. So as outlined in my letter to the council, obviously, if you issue a certificate, it has to go to the the state, and then the state has an opportunity to approve or reject. Assuming they approve within the timeframe they're supposed to approve, that'll be prior to December 31, 2020. So I, unfortunately, for the applicant, read the statute as saying that the state will automatically do that and issue the certificate for December 31, immediately following the date of issuance. And then, except for 8.4, so let me just look at 8.4 really quick.
And I'd like to remind everyone that counsel just mentioned that the State Tax Commission will review this as well, if approved, to make sure that the approval is accurate and you fit the criteria as well. Do you have something you'd like to?
Yeah, I have a question for counsel.
Thank you.
So, option two and option three. So option two says the application was approved for 10 years, period. Option three, the application was approved for a blank year, and the certificate will not be extended. Is that language intentionally left vague in option two about an extension?
You mean option three?
No, I mean, is it intentionally vague as to whether or not an extension is an option in option two?
I'm sorry.
It doesn't forbid an option.
Right. So option two, there could be an extension. Is that?
No, you can't go past 10 years. The statute doesn't allow more than 10 years. That is the maximum. They're requesting the maximum of 10 years. You do have the ability to grant less than 10 years if you so choose, or grant 10 years with conditions for extensions after a certain amount of time. That's thus the reason for those options. Thus the reason if if, like option three, the application, you approved it for five years and said, we're only giving you five, and we're not giving you 10, and we're not going to extend it. So that's what that's intended to basically suit what's defined in the statute for what your options are for the requested abatement. So the reason it's 10 years, it's specific because they can't go past it.
Okay.
Period.
Mr. Lamb.
I've heard the point of more useless rhetoric. I got this packet on Friday with all these proposed resolutions and detailed legal briefs of things, okay? I'm curious to know why there's been no discussion of, all I've heard from the developers, I have to have a 10-year maximum tax abatement for the entire property. But in these proposed resolutions and things, it says, oh, we have the option to give them a resolution for one year and renew it. We have the option to give it to them for five years and renew it. We have some options. So what really, you know, what really, truthfully, is the, you know, minimum requirement for the tax abatement for their outside government funding? No one ever asked the question. I've never heard a word of it from anyone. And there's been no comment. So that's why I talk about the grease. And, you know, why was no one's interested in ameliorating the suffering of the residents in these kind of situations?
Mr. Gip, you having comments on that?
There's a detailed pro forma that has to go to the state of Michigan. And what I mean by that is they look at every every dollar that's to be expended, the projected value of the project, the guarantees of return, the stability of the developer, the financial capital that will go into it. It's all really, quite frankly, down to the dollar in every aspect. When all of that gets analyzed, the MEDC bases their recommendation upon, in this case, a 10-year abatement in lieu of some of the other opportunities that were available. And so we're making a request for the full 10 years, knowing how this tax is going to project out, because the total pro forma package to the state relies on it. And I hate to say that, Mr. Lamb, you say, oh, it's a developer saying, oh, we have to have it. Well, in this case, in order to do this particular project, we just do.
And I would also comment that that was my motion. And if my motion doesn't pass, there could be another debate on that. But I mean, I took into consideration the state requirement, the return on investment that has to happen on this thing. It's been scaled back, scaled back at the request of the public. We've had meetings. And so they've lost return on investment. So that that debate resulted in a finer product, I think, that the community likes better. And you look at the decay that's been there and what was so eloquently brought out over the next 10 years, what we're not going to get if it continues to sit. So that's why I included option two in my motion. And at this point, my motion stands on option two. But I would like to go back to to make my motion correct. Are we then statutorily required to what my original motion was, December 31, 2022 to December 31, 2032?
I believe that's how the statute reads. And it obviously.
We like the law. Follow the law, whatever law says.
My motion stands on those dates for our attorney and for counsel if that's statutorily required.
And and the STC will issue that certificate and put those dates in there if, since your motion is for 10 years, and if that passes, they'll issue it for that and basically tell us. But I'm quite confident that it's that date.
You agree with that, Mr. Gip?
Like I say, we want to work with the community. We like the law. So that's the basis. I mean, just for the benefit of you and the public, that because of the way our bill of taxes are assessed and drawn, that that really doesn't kick in until the final text, anyway.
Right. So, and when we talk about the state, we're talking about the State Tax Commission.
Right.
The STC.
Right.
And I would like to add that, I believe I read, and I believe this is the case with the other abatements that we've done, I'm not a fan of them, quite honestly, but special needs require special action, special opportunities require special action. But there is an annual review to make sure that you're fulfilling criteria of additional jobs and so on and so forth, that is sent in, again, that data is provided and sent in as part of a, just a review process.
The state of Michigan requires a review on each of their incentives. That's been in the process now for about 10 years or so. I would indicate, for your benefit, the public, I'm sure your counsel knows this, that this certificate is revocable. You have to have criteria, meaning if this developer can't pull it off, if they they don't come through with the public space that they've described in their PUD, all of those types of reasons that this community can look and seek to revoke it, they would have to go through a very similar process. All of that is a safeguard, and for the purpose of the public to say, well, seems like it's drawn out, it seems like you, okay, only one step at a time. All of that's for the safeguard of you and the public. Developers would prefer, I'm sure those that are here would prefer, if we could just come to one meeting and and have our case served, that would be awesome. But it's all for the benefit of preservation for the public voice. You can revoke the certificate if the criteria that you found, it turns out that we stood up here and lied, if the numbers that we're talking about are not true because we committed a fraud, if we only build half the project, all those reasons, you can look to revoke the certificate at a future date.
My support still.
Okay. That's my question, like, do procedurally, too, still support.
Did you have a?
No, that was just it. I didn't hear that before, so.
Mr. Lamb.
Might I suggest that we call the question? All the commissioners have spoken except for Brad. And I think that let these people go home, it would be great.
And counsel, anything else that you'd like to add, sir?
I don't know if you're interested in actual taxable value as it stands right now. I have that number from Oakland County Equalization that I got last week.
Is that required in the motion?
No, it's not required in the motion. I know you were interested in numbers. And, you know, obviously, that's one number, and that will be taxed, and the village will receive the taxes on that taxable value. And it's kind of up in the air what the assessed and new taxable value is when it's completed or near completion and reassessed, and thus the reason for the estimate of that increase in taxable value that will not be realized for a period of time.
Okay. Any other counsel comments? Mr. O'Neil.
Mr. President, members of the council. Mr. President, you asked me today if I had experience with the 210, and I told you I did not. I remember now, when I was in another community, the city of Howell, I was out there in the late 90s, and they had a lot of these 210s with Miraboni and a lot of the big ones out there. And what the assessor would do would get these reports, they would come from the MEDC and whoever, and they watch this real closely. And they watch to make sure that they meet their guidelines. And if they don't, they come back to the council.
I've witnessed that as well. That's why I brought it up. Anything else? All right. Roll call, please.
Lamb?
No.
Pluck singer?
Yes.
Matheson?
Yes.
Narsh?
Yes.
Rudd?
Yes.
Van Portfleet?
Yes.
Hobbs?
Yes.
Thank you.
Wilson Carey, six one.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on the agenda, West Village PUD extension. Okay. Don't go away.
Shoot, I thought I was leaving.
All right. Make your case, sir.
So as you, Ed Narsh, know that we're working on this diligently, your ordinance actually provides a request to extend our PUD approval. We gained that planned unit development, the preliminary approval, almost six months ago. That time period is about to expire. We set forth in our letter to you through your good clerk that the criteria is simply that we've had erstwhile diligence. We have. We've outlined that tonight. I would just incorporate all those comments again. We're not asking for the moon on this. If we could get a six-month extension so that we could complete the planning process, now that we know that we're moving with the MEDC, that should be sufficient.
Six months be sufficient?
I think so. Six months to get through planning.
Mr. President.
For the PUD.
It's not full of the program.
No, 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 no. It's just through, confirming the PUD, yeah. Yeah, six months.
Mr. Lamb.
I move to extend the PUD as the petitioner is requesting.
Right now, in our recommendation, it says one year. You're asking six months.
Well, we'll take a year. I just didn't want to be greedy.
Does that change your?
Yeah, I mean, we'd rather have a year, but.
I thought he said six.
Six months is fine.
Okay, so we have a motion for a six-month extension on the PUD. I'll support. Discussion.
Just one clarification, Council President, we're assuming that's the six months from the date of expiration. So whatever that date is that it would otherwise expire.
You agree, sir?
It would be six months.
Yes.
I amend my support and agree as well. Okay. All those who favor, please, in the cave, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Approve. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. President.
Sure. Next, agenda item is item three, which is disposition of TIF petition. And Mr. O'Neil, sir, would you like to open this up?
Yes, I would, Mr. President, members of the board. Mr. Harry Stevens has requested that this item appear on the agenda tonight. He wants to talk about a timeline with supporting documents regarding petition drive for petition on ordinance number 36.05. He's requesting that the village council take affirmative action on the petition or schedule a special action for the question on the petition. And you'll see, refer just to the city attorney with the comments that he, and the way he has directed the village board in the past.
Okay, so we have a recommendation. The village attorney should be consulted on this, but I would like to ask, Mr. Stevens, sir, would you like to come up and do a presentation or discussion or anything you'd like to add, sir, or?
Harry Stevens, 311 North Shore. If I could just step back to the last issue, I believe the taxes there, maybe on the Eman Center and those properties, are they not part of the DDA's taxation TIF program? That that property would have been free of taxes, I believe, when it was in the school district, and then it was purchased by somebody. It would seem as though that becomes a tax roll. And then, but that was 37, 35 years ago or so. So maybe that money that's being paid is being captured by the by the TIF. I'm not sure. Didn't study it, so just as a thought. I'd like to paint a picture of what 37 years ago looked like.
Hey, Harry, could you move the mic?
Surely.
Yeah, thank you. I had some trouble hearing you.
Hope I don't sneeze. The council in 1985, that that passed this original ordinance, which was 3601, four have passed away, three are still alive, and only one still lives in Lake Orion. Just a point of interest. The 19, or excuse me, the 2022 council, two were residents in 1985, as far as I can figure. That'd be Mr. Narsh and Mr. Van Portfleet, I believe. Probably two weren't even born yet, or if they were, they were very young. Van Portfleet's son Sam wasn't born. Mr. Narsh, he was near early experiences of his police hood and starting his young family at that time.
And I was at the meeting in 1985.
Pardon me?
I said, I was at the meeting in 1985.
You probably remember intimately.
I didn't live here.
And some of the village council members weren't old enough to vote in that year. A history, the USSR still existed at that time. That didn't break down until 1991. The Berlin Wall existed until 1989, so that was another historical event that was there. President Ronald Reagan was in his first term, and we've either had six or seven presidents since then. 37 years is a long time. Financially, $100 in 1985 is now worth $277, or a 277% increase caused by inflation. An average loaf of bread in 1985 cost 79 cents. Today it's $2.50. I think that's a little low, but that's what the statistics say. Average gallon of gas in 1985 was $1.20. They claim now it's $4.99. Maybe not here, but nationally, that's the number. Average cost of a car was $6,298. Today, they estimate it to be around $40,000. The Dow Jones in 1985 was $1,500. Today, it's around $29,000. Things have gotten expensive over the years, caused by inflation and things of that nature. DDA and TIF stats, in 1985, there were 992 people who lived in the district. And that's according to the 3601 original document for the DDA and TIF. The initials SEV for the district was $6,203,000. The captured amount in 1986 was $11,326. Now, back in those days, we could capture school money. That got changed, so I netted out the school money. This is the actual comparable to what we have today. Again, from the original 3601, the average projected capital capture for the first year was going to be 21,000, for the first 10 years, excuse me, was $21,000, $21,520 per year, or $215,000 for the entire term of the 10 years. The next 10 years, which was projected, was going to be, for a total of the 10 years, of $486,500. of four hundred and eighty-six thousand five hundred and sixty-one. With a very nice gesture by Ms. Malone, she gave me the information for what it is for this year, two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three, and the capture from taxes is eight hundred seventy-one thousand two hundred and seventy-eight, and I thank you very much for that. So that's my, my story for the historical of this. So, because of these types of things, that's what started me off on changing the financial situation for our village. And so, I'm going to read casually basically what I have sent and you have had before, but so it gets into the public record, we'll just read it for them. Council members, my request is to either the council to take affirmative action on our petition, or take the petition to a special election, and that is the bottom line of what we're calling for. This petition process, very difficult and confusing, as witnessed by the comments by myself and the village attorney at several occasions, I also suggest that it's unfair and beset with delays and instructions. I have included in this packet a number of separate documents that I have numbered so as to make reference to my arguments. Number one was a calendar identifying the timelines of things that have taken place. On the week of June thirteenth, I started gathering information on how to do a petition, and I'm a laborer, I don't know how to do that. I met with the village clerk, and she directed me to contact the township clerk and suggested contacting Joe Rosell, who is the Oakland County Elections official. And I took those suggestions. On June twenty-fourth and twenty-third and twenty-fourth, I tried to call Mr. Rosell several times, leaving messages, and never got a response to them. June twenty-ninth, I emailed Representative Riley and was told that his office could not give directions on how to prepare a petition. And such questions is, what is the wording? Who approves the wording? When do they have to be turned in? Basic fundamental things, nothing. The week of July fifth, I went to the Oakland County Elections Office to contact her, Mr. Rosell, who was not available. I talked to his election staff and was given one copy of a blank copy of the county and local proposal petition form, and told to hire an attorney, that was the help that I got. Being a little bit bullheaded, I continued on, and took my guidance from other petitions that I had looked and read at and tried to clone the wording to do such. In the week of July eighteenth, I prepared my first petition, I asked the village clerk for a copy of the DDA and TIF ordinance and was given the ordinance thirty-six oh-one, and that's how I wrote the petition. I put that out and in one day found out, oh, that is the original, we have four amendments onto it, so I rewrote the petition to now thirty-six oh-five. And the thirty-fifth was the first signature on that first petition, and it was by one of her council members. On the twenty-sixth, I discovered an error on the petition regarding the ordinance number, changed it to the petition, that is, the thirty-five oh-six, which I just referenced. July twenty-ninth, started the second petition drive. On August second, I turned the second set of petitions to the village clerk with three hundred and fifty-six petitions at two twenty-five PM. On August fourth, the village interim village manager personally delivered the petitions to the township clerk at ten-thirty in the morning. And I thank him for that. It turns out, really, I could have taken it to the township clerk and avoided the delay that was there, but I wasn't aware that that was an option, since they were received by the village.
We have quite a bit more of this letter, if you might.
Yes.
Stay with that for us.
All right. August fifth, the township clerk tried to return the verified position of the village administration office, but was unable to because the new policy being closed on Fridays. She gave it to the police department. This is a copy of the instruction hanging in the petition, note, not a single mention of need to fill out the upper right-hand portion of the petition. I consider this an inappropriate instruction for how to complete the form, and I gave you a copy of the form, and the entire side that has the explanations for how to fill out the form had no mention whatsoever of that one little box up in the upper right-hand corner on the front, and that is why we had a failure on number two petition. August eighth, document three, my letter identifying that the petitions didn't contain sufficient number of signatures, and there was an error because the box in the upper right of the petition nullified twenty-two of the signed petition sheets, and that's what I made reference to as poor instructions, they were not clearly identified in the instruction panel. A six-page option letter by Attorney Davis of the DDA identified and defending the position regarding the error of the twenty-two positions, I will leave out my editorial comment on that for reasons. On August tenth, started the third petition drive. On August eleventh, completed the third petition drive with a combination of signature of four hundred and ten signatures. August twelfth, a Friday, turned in the third set of petitions into the township clerk because the village was closed on Fridays. At eight-thirty in the morning, the village administration was closed. August fifteenth, informed not good enough signatures, short by less than ten. August fifteenth, whoops, where am I now? Forget that.
Back to number six.
Yeah. Sixteenth, started the fourth petition drive. Seventeenth, fourth petition drive, turned in to the township clerk. On August eighteenth, the village clerk emailed me at eleven forty, or at nine forty-one, notifying that there were three hundred and seventy-eight verified good signatures, also another email stating that the petition be presented to the council on eight twenty-two. The village attorney's letter of August sixteenth questions the village charter law versus state law specifying articles, which is aforementioned in my reading simply states that the state, in the text of the words of the, mentioned the governor, the House of Representatives, and two-thirds vote of both houses. That obviously doesn't apply to our village, because we don't have a governor, we don't have two-thirds houses, therefore I suggest that the village charter is what would prevail. We are given instructions on how to handle this in chapter seven of our, of our ordinances, and that is reasonably clearly explained that the options on that, and I'm going to quote that, "If a referendary petition repealing an order to which the petition refers is determined to submit the proposal to the electors of the village, the other option is for the council to make the decision for them, since you are the elected body of the, of our community." Considering the fact that four days or three and a half days were lost due to placement of the petitions within the village offices, and the fact that the village offices are now closed on Friday and limited the ability of the information to be shared, I believe it's fair to say that about three and a half days of my timeframe was lost. If those three and a half days were taken in, this petition would have been presented for the November eighth election, because it would have met the timeframe of meeting that, which was August sixteenth at four PM. Based on those facts and the height, I feel that because of confusing and lack of guidance, petition form and poor instructions and loss of those three and a half days, that I should have some consideration. I respectfully request that the Lake Orion Village Council to enact the ordinance that, as we're talking about, which is seven point eight B, and of the petitions, and call for a special election or offer the citizens the opportunity to make the decision. Three hundred and seventy-eight of your constituents have asked you to act. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. At this time, I have a couple of the speaker cards, of people that would like to speak as well, before council gets into their deliberations, something for. Daniel Fox.
Good evening, sir. Daniel Fox, owner of Otsa, Lake Orion. I'm going to keep this a lot more brief than I intended to. I'm mainly here in support of the DDA, for everything they've done for me as a business to help keep me afloat, since I did open two months prior to COVID hitting. I really appreciate the help I've gotten from them, helping me getting grants and all sorts of things, so. I do have a question, and maybe somebody can help answer to me. We do have a redevelopment liquor license, and I believe there's five other businesses in town that have the same. Then, by definition, the reason we have these licenses is because there's a DDA in effect. So, what we're worried about is that we will lose the ability to renew our liquor license and maintain future liquor license if the DDA is resolved, so. I don't know if anyone here can help give me an answer, I have a call out to my attorney, and I've yet to receive an answer on that, so. But, that, that's something that maybe people haven't thought of, is how it's going to affect the restaurants in town.
Well, we'll, we'll look at that, debate possibility, but I would say cross that bridge if we come to.
Okay, thank you.
Next, Rosemary Ford, do you have comments you'd like to make about this? Ms. Rosemary Ford, comments regarding the DDA proposal, DDA vote petition?
Rosemary Ford, two-two-five North Broadway. I've been hearing a lot go back and forth. I too am concerned, because I don't want to see it dissolved, because I see what it's brought to this community, and I think the benefits are tremendous. As I said, I've lived here all my life, and I'm sixty-seven years old. I have lived here at a time when, I would say probably from nineteen seventy to nineteen ninety, you could shoot a cannon off down Main Street, other than Sagebrush, there was nothing else. Now it is vibrant and alive, and so I feel that it's important that we keep this, and I really feel it's crucial that it stays. They do help, the DDA does have funds that come back to the village to help pay for it, pay for services that they render, such as police, the DPW, and lighting. I also look at that, from what I understand, with the DDA and us recapturing funds, we are able to keep these funds in our community, as opposed to them going elsewhere, meaning that, as opposed to when we pay our taxes, we have monies that go to Oakland County, we have Oakland County Community College, Orion Township.
Money that comes from.
Money that comes from, yes.
Twelve different other taxing.
Correct. And if we dissolve this, I have to be honest, we've had, my husband and I have had some people come to us in the past week, actually four different people, that have brought this topic up to us, and they say, well, you know, if it's eliminated, it will lower our taxes. It will not lower your taxes, because these are recaptured funds that stay right here. The other thing they say is, oh, and if it's dissolved, then the village will get all that money. They will not get all that money. All that money's going to go back to the entities that we capture it from. We gain, I believe, and the DDA would know better than myself, but I think it's like an extra five hundred thousand dollars that helps us to make this community go. So I just want to say that I am in support of it. I will be honest, initially, I did sign that petition, but after everything that's going on and thinking about it, I only wish that I could change that signature, and I am unable to. So, I know that I've spoken with some other people, and they have felt the same way. So, just thank you for listening to me, appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Mr. Ford, or Mr. Colkanos?
Am I interrupting something, Mr. Lamb? I'll wait, I'll wait.
I'm going to time you.
Okay. Don't time me, because the other gentleman, the first gentleman up here had fifteen minutes. You want to time me, we'll time each other later on. Board, Mr. President, attorney, I want all of you to think about something. Who is going to do the job of the DDA? Are any of you going to step up and go to Mr. Fox or Elena Campbell and say, we want you in our village, we're going to help you, we're going to advertise for you, we're going to put you right in front, we're going to use your business at our events that we have? Is somebody going to take on music in the park? Gets three, four hundred people. Anybody have another idea to bring three or four hundred people? I put on a car show for Golling Buick GMC, we get the DDA's support. It's one of the most loved events that we have here, because the people come down from the village and everywhere else to see this. The DDA is a vital part of this community. Mr. Fox brought up one of my points. If the DDA wasn't here during COVID, we would have lost every restaurant and probably a few businesses, because I didn't see anybody else on the board at that time stepping up and going to all the meetings at Oakland County to learn how to save the businesses. Mr. Fox, I'm going to ask you, did the DDA help you during the COVID? Elena? Okay? Who's going to do that? Mr. Lamb, you want some of the money, okay? Let me make a suggestion. Have you ever talked to a state representative, a state senator, congressman Peters, or excuse me, about that? Okay? Getting money? I'm getting off the subject, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, that's all right, if you might direct those comments to me.
Okay, sorry.
And to the chair, and let's not get this into a brouhaha.
Well, I don't appreciate somebody trying to time me when it's your job to time me, okay? So I think you better really consider this whole issue, and my last point is, if you have a mortgage payment, and you're a day late because the mail didn't go through, you forgot to put a stamp on it, okay? What's the mortgage company going to tell you? Sorry, Charlie, you missed the boat, you got to pay the late fee, thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Ford?
Standford, two-two-five North Broadway. I guess my thing is, I feel like it's premature in a sense, because it isn't, there's a committee that's looking into the whole process, and I don't know, my only question is, I don't know where we are in that committee and what information they've come up with, and I'd like to have that information, too.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Mr. Childers, sir?
Jim Childers, one ninety-seven West Flint Street, part two. I also signed that petition, because I always thought it's a good idea to have public input, it's the American way, we have the right to petition our government. After hearing other sides to the story, I would like to take my name off that petition as well. I support the DDA. I see what it has done for this community, this community is vital. There's a number of factors that come into play with that, but the DDA is one of the moving forces that make that happen.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Okay, closed call to the public. Now, council, Mr. Spitz, sir, I'm going to give you, are you, come on, we're going to move this along.
I didn't know we were in a hurry. I want to just say a couple of things. One-twenty South Broadway, owner of that building and Bitter Toms, also an owner of one forty-six South Broadway, forty-four Flint Street, and a real estate developer who's developed four million square feet of real estate in his lifetime. I want to ask the, the council here, does three-one-three pizza happen without the DDA? Does one-twenty Broadway Street happen without the DDA? Does the Eman Center, possible development of the Eman Center happen without the DDA? Doesn't. What I want to ask you, and there is seven of you on the board, can one of seven of you tell me, if you can name one city or community that's successful without a DDA? Can you?
We're not going to do that right now, sir.
No, I, I just, I just wondered, maybe the village attorney? Let's talk about Traverse City, the vibrancy, the mini Chicago, Royal Oak, Rochester. I mean, you can't name one, can you? We talked about the deterioration of properties without the assistance of the DDA and the community, with developers like myself and Mr. Mosheri and, and the guys that are trying to redevelop the Eman Center, who, one of the, you know, people here in the audience today said that Eman Center's been sitting there thirty-five years. I, one, made an offer on the Eman Center, I could not make that development work, no matter what you gave me. What I'm trying to understand. What I'm trying to understand is that how can you consider, if you don't like the leadership of the DDA, then change it because you have the ability. If you don't like the direction of the DDA, then you have the ability to change to the direction. What is our vision and what is our task? But right now, the DDA in this village, and that's why you brought in developers like myself, Mosheri, to this village, because it was always such a welcoming environment. And now what you're doing is you're taking away all of those assets. And is it for money? Because I'm not certain that everybody understands the true dynamics of the financial system when it comes to taking away the DDA and where those monies get applied. Lastly, I want to talk about, you know, one of the members on your board said something like, I wouldn't approve 120 South Broadway when that was approved, the tax abatement. I would love, and I will put this on the record right now, I will turn in my tax returns for the last three years. I promise you, as a developer, I make zero money on that asset. It cost me 9.2 million. I borrowed 4.8 million at 3.65%. I have not taken a nickel in three years. And if you want them, I'll give you my tax returns. Take the depreciation out, just look at true dollars. It makes no money. Why did we invest in that, in this community? Because it was welcoming, we believed in it, and we believed in it long term, and so did the DDA. They believed in us and as a developer, long term, and creating what we would call, or I use, a culture sphere. And I think as a developer, I've done that in this community. One of the members of the community came out and spoke, and they said they could see whatever through the streets. Now, on Thursday, Wednesday, Friday, Saturday night, we have a vibrant community. If that's not what you want as a board, let us know. We'll go somewhere else. But please let us know and stop wasting our time.
That's the last for the call of the public. No one else indicated they wanted to speak. Thank you, and we'll move on to counsel deliberation. So I think what the intent here is, Mr. Stevens, while I know the intent here, is asking this council to either take an affirmative action on the petition, which would mean that the village would determine or just flat out say that we wish to retract the amendment of the DDA, I do believe is what the intention is here, and otherwise, or take the petition to a special election. Any thing counsel wants to say at this point? Mr. Hobbs?
Yes. I wanted to be fair to both sides of this issue. We had the petition going around. I did sign it. It fell through, and so I'm waiting to see what the committee does. I don't hear anything from the committee yet, but I know they're working, so I'm giving the committee their chance now. So I like, will the committee come forth with a report, or how are we going to find out about what's going on?
Thank you, sir.
I can give a quick update on the committee. We've met twice this next one. We've asked the village attorney to come up with, to get us a number, a lot of different numbers and information from the county, from the state, as far as future projections, and then what are our options moving forward? Because we want to know all of them. I mean, we all know there's, we can just keep things as they are, but what are the different legal options that are in front of us, knowing all the projected numbers that we can then make a recommendation? So future numbers, projections will be our next meeting coming up later this month, and then I'm assuming we can't get through all of it in an hour, so we'll have another meeting to talk about what our legal options are to be able to make the best recommendation.
I would like to add a comment to that. I am an alternate to that committee, and there's been one occasion already where someone could not attend, but that information that Ms. Rutt's discussing is to look at all of the options that both a DDA and the village can utilize to work for the best solution for the community. Mr. Narsh?
Okay, so the committee, I want to make a couple of comments. When this issue first began to be presented to the council, the first thing I wanted to do, I mean, in my entire career, it's been gather facts, investigate, get as much information as you can, be as transparent as possible, and come up with a finding of fact. The trier of fact in this case, unfortunately tonight, has to be this committee on this issue. Mr. Stevens had asked for a considerable amount of time about this issue, and at one point in a conversation we were having back and forth, he had mentioned that he started this ballot initiative because he wasn't seeing any progress from the council on this issue. And what he didn't know is for the last two or three months, we had been talking about that, and I had been asking for this committee because I wanted to gather facts. I wanted to get each side of these bodies together. I wanted to be on that committee. I consider myself a fact finder, and, you know, I mean, if somebody can come forth and show where I've, you know, not been honest with finding fact and truth over the last 40 years with you all, I welcome that, but that's my desire and intent. And he said, I brought that forward because I didn't see anything happen. The committee is here, and we're looking at all these issues. Now, I know this specific issue tonight is about this election, and I got to say, and no fault of Mr. Stevens, he tried, but this thing was a down-to-the-wire thing, and here we are left with, as a council member, I've got lots of questions. We could just throw it out there and say, oh, okay, we've got all these petition signatures, of which I've heard several tonight that said they want to recant their signatures. But more importantly, we've got legal issues that have been presented from our attorneys that say there are certain things that we have to take into consideration. And when it's kind of important, when you say you're going to throw an election, again, I want to make sure that we're doing everything legal because it's not like in the media you've heard anything about election fraud or something wrong with elections, and I certainly don't want to include Lake Orion in that. So I've got concerns. What's the freshness on these signatures? The issue of the referendum has to be within 90 days of the enactment of the ordinance, which was back in 2020. Who would pay for and how long? All of these came to fruition because there were residents, and rightly so, who were raising questions, and they weren't getting answers back. Now, the upside of that is there were members of our council and our DDA that were talking and putting together our board to look at some of these things and find some true facts. But my concern of just throwing this out of this body, saying, oh, okay, we're going to cancel our vote in 2020, and if somebody makes that motion, I guess we'll have to vote on that. But the other thing is there are so many legal issues with this election that I have like absolutely zero confidence, and I base part of that on Mr. Stevens' letter that he read tonight, on the falling up the stairs to get where we are right now. I have zero confidence in moving forward to say, I want to throw this at an election, which I have no idea legally if we can even do based on this issue without additional input from our attorneys and perhaps the DDA attorney. You know, more minds, the better. I mean, that's my comment this evening. It's about those, and I don't take that lightly. I respect people who come forward and say, I'd like to see this. I don't know how that was presented to them. Clearly, the Fords have had people come back and say, well, it was presented to me, or I left with the impression that if I signed this petition and we took this to a vote and it passed, I'll get more taxes back. I'm not saying that's what was presented, but I heard testimony this evening that said that's how they interpreted this. So at this point, I have zero confidence in moving forward and saying, let's have an election, when there's so many legal issues and other issues that are taking away and eroding my confidence that at this point in time, this is the right thing to do.
Is that it?
That's it.
Anyone else? Ms. Lamb?
Thank you so much for your opinions on the DDA, all of you. The, Mr. Stevens has put a lot of effort into this, and I think the reason he came here tonight is because it's clear that our charter and our local board governs this question. I've researched this heavily. I think I personally spent like, you know, thousands of dollars, you know, researching the law. It really, this whole question falls on Jair, okay? And you, and Doug, and Brad, and Teresa, and Sarah, to decide whether or not we're going to follow our charter. The misconception appears to be growing out here and continues to be promulgated by most everybody speaks is that canceling the TIF doesn't kill the DDA. It cancels their main funding source. Last year, they got $60,000 in donations. The DDA could get a 2% village against their businesses, and you could create a new TIF. Okay? When the DDA was started, it didn't have a TIF, and it had no money, and the village supported it. Who used to run the DDA before they hired a director? I think the village manager used to run the DDA. In a small community like this, we discussed here at the board level that the planning commission could run the DDA under the state law. So what Harry's here tonight isn't to argue, you know, he's arguing about the legality of his petitions and what the village council's obligations are to it. So really, I just am going to speak to that. I believe, after, you know, discussion with the attorney, that there is no law that tells us what to do in this case. There's no protocol. Mr. Stevens has exhausted himself to try to find some protocol that dictates what council has to do. I've read every state law affected by this thoroughly myself, and there's still no protocol. So it's up to the council to decide what to do with the petition. That's all. So our charter says they go to the next election, and it says, or they can go to a special election. So Harry screwed up, or the petitions were screwed up, or the process was flawed, he didn't make the November election. But the petitions are still valid, and it's still up to the village council to decide whether to have an election or not. If we don't decide to have an election, I believe we're in violation of the law and the intentions of the law. Now, the council is not made in opinion on this. Okay? So it's the council's decision. So it's up to us to decide.
Anyone else? No, sir. There's no more public comment at this point. Sorry. Apologies. Yes, Ms. Luszczyk.
So Mr. Stevens, I believe, was not given very good instructions, or, you know, when you have a letter that, as long as he wrote, explained or outlining all the missteps, it's clear that those processes need to be fixed, but what we have left is a big legal mess. So before voting on this, I do think we need more direction because, like somebody said, I mean, you know, election fraud and all that, that hasn't been an issue very much in recent years, so I don't want it to start at this level now. I'm kidding. But I do want to apologize to Mr. Stevens. This was a big effort on your part, but I just, I don't know what to do with regards to moving forward with this because there were so many missteps.
Anyone else? So we have Ms. Rutt.
I was just going to say, I agree that this process is, I mean, it's multiple layers of opinions, direction, government. That's hard when you don't know, which is why I also echo like, this is also hard for us because while the guidance wasn't clear, we're still at this place of there were missed deadlines, and I appreciate all the effort that was put in, but just because all the effort was put in and it was hard doesn't necessitate us to give special consideration because different deadlines were missed because the process is hard. That's just rushing things, and I don't think we do our best work when we're just rushing things. So yeah, that's where I'm at as well.
I'll make my comments real quick. In the attorney's letter, I just wanted to mention this. Most notably is the question that if the section referenced in the petition was repealed, then that arguably removes most funding sources from the DDA, and thus the DDA may cease to be able to function without any TIF capture funds. So it doesn't say that the petition doesn't state that the DDA would be terminated, but without possible funding, we are unsure how the DDA could continue to exist from a practical perspective. So I just want to mention that because I think that's an accurate statement, and I am not in favor of just saying that we are not going to fund the DDA or to defund the DDA. I will never be a supporter of that. It's been too much good. We could talk for a long time, but some of the things that I wanted to mention is just like, even like fork and pint. There was cases, fork and pint would not be here today. The DDA bought that building and then sold it and helped them and assisted them with coming in here. That question about who does the job of the DDA, that's a good one. I don't know. Who would? Who can? And the petition language, many different things brought up, but one of the things I wanted to mention is on the county, state, and national level, Lake Orion is recognized as a community with forethought and resilience and growth and free thinkers, and that's part of and a result of the DDA. We're heralded. That has no price tag on it that I can associate it to it. That is marketing above and beyond anything we've ever achieved. We have people knock on our door and say, hey, we want to be part of that community. That's what the DDA has assisted us with. So I just want to make my personal statement about I will never be in favor of defunding the DDA. But we have no council question here tonight. We have no motion for any action. The one thing that I will suggest is although on multiple cases, the petitions have been deemed as not being accurate and complete, I don't know about the ability to say, well, we would like to do a special ballot or a special vote on this in May or April. There's information, we don't know, zero confidence at this point that we can move forward, much like Mr. Narsh had said. I share in that comment as well, and that's my comments. Yes, sir?
Just one more. You know, the old joke is, there's two things you should never watch being made. One is sausage, the other is legislation. Hopefully, at the end of it, the sausage tastes good and the legislation works well. But the committee is formed, and I want to say this back honestly and openly to others. This committee is formed. There will be information coming back to the public, and again, it's to look at all of these concerns and all of these questions about infrastructure needs within the village and how the DDA can assist, and they have been assisting and have stepped that up. So that committee is ongoing, and there will be information coming.
Last one for me. A good friend and colleague in the municipal government, Mr. Barnett, had made this statement, and it's true, there's no gain in subtraction. By removing, there's no gain. This community sets on the cusp of great growth and great things. It's really my job, their job, our job, to look at that opportunity, even with this lumberyard consideration. Let's move forward. Let's do-
Let's do the right things. Anything else from anybody? Is there any recommended motion? Nothing happens, nothing happens? What are we doing?
All right. So you want to, I'll just make the motion. I move in behalf of a special election in May for Mr. Stevens. That's what he came for here, so I'm going to, I've supported Harry, he's a diligent worker and a good citizen. There's your motion, Eric.
Motion fails for lack of support. And we will close this item at this time and move on to selection of village manager, item number four. Mr. O'Neill had mentioned that he would like to excuse himself as we debate the village manager, but Mr. O'Neill, you have a manager's report. Would you like me to fulfill reading that later?
I was going to ask you if you would do that for me.
I will, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll just take two minutes as a mini recess, please. Two minutes. Thank you.
Tax, abatement issues, just about everything that we're looking at and addressing is his strong suit. I also know the facts of why he left, and quite honestly, I was, I think I was the first person he told when he was leaving, and I told him after what he told me was, dude, I would go too, because of the opportunity that he had at that moment. And it was just something that was kind of off the charts of a blessing for him. But that said, I believe that his acumen and his musical talent to interject at the right time, he's not my baby, but I just, that's my opinion, is he has that snapshot in time skill set that we desperately need to move forward over the next couple of years in this village.
Ms. Lawson.
So, my experience with Darwin was when he was a consultant, I believe, for Joe Young, last year or the year before, my timeframe has gotten a little warped. I was underwhelmed. I wasn't really sure what he was doing, how he was helping, that was not communicated. I think that Mr. O'Neill has actually really hit the ground running, and not only that, I've heard positive feedback from folks that are at the village offices on a daily basis and have to interact with him on a daily basis. So, I think now we need some new blood, and Mr. O'Neill has shown that he is willing to really get the job done and do it well, and not be disrespectful to his colleagues.
Anyone else? Mr. Hobbs?
Yeah, as one of the people that picked the interim, and I don't stand behind him because I think he's just getting started in what he wants to help the village with. Echo Sarah with, yeah, I heard, I've heard from village staff and stuff like that, and they work well with him. And I think that's important, because I don't deal with them every day, but they do. And I think he's got some things up his sleeve that could help the village out. I'm willing to stay with him. So that's where I'm at.
Anyone else?
This is just a question if we're allowing public comment. Normally you do that before motion.
Uh, yeah, actually, I should do that now. I'm sorry, because I had somebody ask me that, and that was Mr. Reardon. Are you still here? He wanted to make a public comment about the manager. Is there anybody else? Closed call, public. So we'll continue on. Ms. Rutt, did you have anything you wanted to add?
You know, I went, you know, I was one of those who was not at the in-person interviews because I had a pre-scheduled first weekend away without the kids since before the pandemic that we scheduled months ago, but had the chance to review the tapes. And a lot of, I mean, some of you may have been here, great applicants, some of them who I think had we not had, if we didn't have such complex issues, could have been great candidates. We just have some really complex issues here in the village that we need people with experience for. Pros and cons to both of them. My experience with Mr. McClary was when he was the previous village manager here was very limited. I was on the Parks Committee. Things that I, I can echo Mr. Narsh's comments that he was very good with budgeting. I can tell you that he came into the Parks Committee meetings and gave us much more information than we ever knew about, about what things cost, not just in terms of, oh, we bought a swing. But then, okay, you bought a swing. This is how much it's also going to cost for the DPW to install it. Here are the actual costs, total costs, that we had never been given before. So I was impressed with that. I know he did come out and plant arborvitae's with us once. But my interaction was limited as I was just on the Parks Committee during that time. And, yeah, so I appreciate that. I appreciate the thinking about what does this village need right now? And we have a lot of things that we need to pay for that have not been planned for. I mean, that, I'm assuming, if I'm remembering dates correctly, Mr. McClary was here when that SAW grant was awarded, but then not when the recommendation from WRC came out for the lift stations. But when we got that recommendation, was that now, four years ago, there hasn't been a plan put forward. And so having someone who can create those plans with that strong financial background is really important. And so I'm comfortable from that aspect of knowing that he's really strong with numbers.
I, Mr. McClary was here previously, and for, I think it was approximately three and a half years, four years. He always provided extreme accuracy, good financial planning, good budget data, was open to all of the questions and communication. He loves this community. He is from this community, whether that makes a difference to anyone or not, but I think it's important. And the only thing that I had with his tenure prior is his involvement, his civic involvement of getting out and meeting and greeting. In the interviews, he indicated, he said that he plans improving that, and with that, I think he'd be a stellar candidate. We need a rock right now. I see him as the opportunity to provide that strength and that rock that we need. We have a lot of issues. I asked him one time a while back about how does he view our village and some of the difficulties we have, and he mentioned that it's no different than other communities. There's nothing really odd or difficult here. Everything can be managed well, and no fear, essentially. So, I like the fact that he was very strong in his statement that he has the background of this community, knows what's going on as far as trying to move forward financially, and with just some of the issues we have that we need to do for infrastructure, he's aware of those. And I believe his exact words were, make no mistake about it, I can hit the ground running. And I think that's an accurate statement. So, anyone else?
Can I make another comment?
Yes.
Yep. I just wanted to say, when, so I was on that committee that recommended Mr. O'Neill as well for the interim manager, and I do think he was the right choice right now for this village, and that he was able to hit the ground running with his experience in the area. And I think either candidate, Mr. McClary or Mr. O'Neill, can do that because they both have experience now in this community. They both have experience in southeast Michigan in general. And I'm, at this point, as I've, as I listen to both their interviews and I looked at their strengths, it really comes down to me some of that fiscal piece in that we need somebody who is very strong in helping us plan for the future. And as I listened to his interview and some of the planning pieces, as how he helped some of the other communities that he has served, that stood out to me.
Ms. Ryan.
Thank you. I sat through the interviews, and I listened to all the candidates, and I would say that Mr. McClary and Mr. O'Neill are both qualified for the position. So I looked at, you know, what are the needs of the village, all right? I noticed that in three committees, Mr. O'Neill, in three communities, Mr. O'Neill provided five-year plans for economic redevelopment, and I think in one case he was appointed by the state to one of the, to one of the communities to develop, who was bankrupt, to develop a five-year plan. So I think, I think he has a strong financial background, and I have noticed that even though he's interim manager, he's got a lot of stuff done around here and just punched it out the door unlike any other person I've ever seen in this village. Okay, I had to live through Joanne. That was an experience. I was a resident at that time. And Mr. McClary was in that, you know, vague era of the village. But what I noticed about Mr. McClary, and I don't want to detract from a very skilled and talented gentleman, but he quit us for more money. He just ditched us and went to another community, and then they had a falling out. He opened his own business. He got a job in a small town making a good salary. And now he wants to come back here because he's so enamored with our community, and he belongs here. So, money isn't everything. A lot of it, I'm not done, Ken, but thank you.
No, I know.
Money is not everything, and I know you want to defend Darwin to no end. Well, I noted quite a few things about Mr. O'Neill recently. He's kind of a take-charge leader kind of guy. And he seems to be leading, leading the village. He's leading the staff. He locked the village council out of the chambers. He took our key cards away because he said we don't belong in the office, and I laughed. I laughed because, you know, he explained why. He said it's a lot, big liability having council people wandering around in the government offices late at night and stuff. And, yeah, I just don't have confidence that Darwin won't leave us again. I have a lot of confidence that Mr. O'Neill will stay here, help us develop a plan, help us develop a budget, get our staff going. He mentioned he would train the new young treasurer. He would train all the staff. He would train these people to take over for him when he left. Which is one thing we've never had here in the village, is continuity. The only continuity we've ever had in the village has been like some council members that have been here forever. And you might see what that's got us. So, yeah, I think I would support Wayne O'Neill. I think the committee did a fantastic job picking him. I agree with Teresa to a point. It would be nice to have one of the less experienced candidates who could maybe grow into the village and, you know, develop a relationship, but face it, we're, we've got a lot of work to do. We have a lot of money to spend. We're going to have a lot of trouble finding the money to fix this stuff, and you guys all know it. And I don't see a quitter, someone who abandoned us, as the going backwards. You know, the Japanese thing is, let's all move forward together. And, you know, I think we should move forward and not go backward.
Mr. Hobbs?
Yeah, I agree with Councilman Narsh that the lifespan of a manager is a few years. But I know Mr. McClary just took this job in another community in April, and now he's quitting, coming to our, back to our community. So, I, that gives me a...
Do you know why?
Pardon?
Do you know why?
No, I don't.
Because they did not fulfill what was stated as part of the contract.
Basically, they're not funding his position.
That's correct.
And they hadn't funded it from the beginning, so they're...
How do you guys know all this stuff? I never know anything. How do you guys always know?
Just do research, sir.
Did you call Darwin up and ask him?
No, sir.
Okay. Because I don't know anything about that, and I didn't find anything.
I did Google, and there was a news article from Stockbridge saying, because, you know, I was curious too about that same question.
I mean, I don't know. I'm just saying, I don't know.
And so there was a news article about Stockbridge that's similar, saying something similar, that they weren't sure if they even needed a manager. That's, that's the information I got.
Right. That was what I read too as well.
So, after he was in the position for how long, did they say they didn't need a village manager anymore?
They didn't decide they didn't need one, but the news article said they hired him, but still weren't sure that they needed one, was the news article I read.
So I'm not so sure in the past that he left us over just money. I cannot verify that. So I think that's an erroneous statement. And then also, the council chambers were locked because we had accusations of visits out of, possibly in the nighttime, of council members, and we had to lock it down. So that was not some great reason because that's appropriate. It's just that this was out of hand. Mr. Narsh?
Uh, no, I was just...
Okay. So anyways, we have a question on the floor. Motion's been made to hire, negotiate, have the attorney negotiate to hire Mr. McClary, and we have the support, and I'll do roll call.
Look, Singer?
No.
Matheson?
Yes.
Narsh?
Yes.
Rutt?
Yes.
Van Porffley?
Yes.
Lamb?
No.
Hobbs?
No.
Motion carries 4-3.
Thank you. So, moving on to reopen the call to the public, non-agenda items, if anybody would like to speak. Mr. Barnett, sir, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you all for what you do for our community. Appreciate it very much. I'm not trying to reiterate and rehash, and I purposely didn't come up during the public comment on the DDA issue because sometimes I think, people think I have too loud of a voice in this situation, in this discussion. But I do think it's important, just a couple of thoughts, and maybe this will be the last time we talk about it for a while. But we have a great opportunity to really come together. We have elections happening in our village. We're working with Oxford, it seems like, sometimes better than we work with our own people, our own community. You know, Mr. Lamb, you just said in your own comments, you believe we should move forward together, and I think that's a really, a good message for all of us. I agree with you. There's been a lot of misinformation, and it has been misinformation. A lot of the people I've spoken with over the last few months, and frankly, over the last year, and we heard some of them tonight, are being fed misinformation. And I think all that this, this discussion does, you almost had my quote, what I've been saying accurate, it was close enough though, but we never get more from subtraction. This entire conversation is about losing resources in our village. The real conversation and discussion should be with this committee about how do we find a way creatively and legally to fund the needs of the village without losing, depending on what year you look at, upwards of half a million dollars a year forever. And it needs to be stated very clearly, getting rid of the DDA will not decrease one resident or business's taxes one penny. And what you're finding is, and what I'm finding in talking with these business owners, is we're dividing the business owners from the council and the DDA. And this room was full a couple of months ago. You had multiple business owners here tonight. Only a couple spoke. If anyone should be for this dissolution, it should be the township, and we're not. You can talk to the other board members. I'm speaking just for myself tonight, but our fire mileage would get a raise. Our parks fund would get a raise. My township general fund would get a raise. And I'm sitting here saying, we don't want it, because those resources are being spent properly and to really support our downtown. And I do think, I'm not going to reiterate everything that was said, but I don't think it's a legal mess. It was said before. We've, we've talked to our legal counsel. I don't disagree. What Mr. Stevens gone through has been frustrating. But, but actually, the law has been followed to a T. So I think we need to stop the misinformation. I would, and I know you already voted on this, but the special election is dangerous. It's costly, and it's going to divide our community. That's my thought. So thank you for, for what you do. We're excited to be great partners and continue to support our downtown, and I'm excited to see the work of this committee. I'm an alternate, but I'm not there, I'm there to learn too. I think Teresa's done a great job saying that over the last few meetings. Even when I don't come to your meetings, I generally watch them. Because I love the work you guys do, and I think we're on track to do great things. And I think that if we did dissolve this or look to take a step back, it would only hurt us. So thank you for all you do. Have a great night.
Thank you. Anyone else? I have one letter I'd like to read in the public comment, and it is from Lloyd and Kathy Cole. Asked that I do this. Hello, my name is Lloyd Cole. My wife Kathy and I reside in the Village of Lake Orion at 544 Barron, and we also own the building and business downtown at 2 South Broadway Street, also known as Ed's Broadway Gift and Costume. I've served as a board member on the village council of the Lake Orion Lions Club, and I'm an active board member in the DDA, chairperson of the Design Committee, and a voice, and a vice commander of the Sons of the American Legion. Kathy has been a board member of the Parks and Rec Committee, an active board member of the Christmas Parade Committee, and a member of the Ladies Auxiliary. We are obviously very involved with the community and will continue to do so. We would like all the council members to know that our Downtown Development Authority has our overwhelming support and think they'd do a superb job to eliminate or defund our DDA. Would be a grave mistake for our residents and businesses. We will and have make sure our associates and friends understand this. Please support our DDA. Our businesses have been here over 25 years, and we have witnessed the downtown, downtown growth like no others. We have become a destination community to live in and operate a business. This is because of our DDA, our DDA Board, and our unbelievable and fantastic volunteers. Thank you, Lloyd and Kathy Cole. Anyone else for open, closed? Okay. Call the public, council comments. Mr. Matheson?
Looking tonight, thank you.
Mr. Lamb?
I'd like to say, I think that Nick and you are jerks for sandbagging Nancy. I think it would have been appropriate for you to have caught her in the hall and said that her, said she was generous enough to give you a copy of her speech, which you had time to look at prior to the meeting, enough time to get organized to comment on its legality. It would have been appropriate to catch her in the hall and say, hey, maybe you shouldn't say this stuff because it's inappropriate. She worked hard on that stuff, and yes, she is my wife, and she's entitled to run for village council. The U.S. Constitution gives women rights to do those kinds of things. So I just want to say I don't appreciate the comments as, as her husband and as a council member. I don't think we should ever sandbag anybody, DDA people, anybody. So that's my comment for tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Hobbs?
Say la vie, life goes on. That's all I have.
Okay, nothing tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Narsh?
Hey, sausage was made. Not everybody's going to like the sausage, but you know what? It's Lake Orion, right? I mean, look at what we've gone through in the last couple hundred years from Canadagua, if I said it right, to where we are today, to swindlers selling swampland, to trying to buy a house in the village. If you don't spend $30,000 over asking, you're not going to get it, and then in 15 minutes, it's gone. There's a reason for that. I've always said it's a three-legged chair. It's our lake, it's our historic residential community, and it's our bangin', boomin' business district. And everybody in this room and everybody that exercised in this debate tonight has a part in it. But when you have a three-legged, and make no mistake, you think Oxford wouldn't love to have a Birmingham-style downtown like we have, in that we're off M24? You don't see gravel trains coming past the sagebrush and past bitter tops. So it's even got a creek in the middle of it, and I want to see us light that up at night so when you're walking downtown, you can see the water coming down the dam. It's kind of cool. And make that, you know, it's something we're going to be talking about in the future. But Lake Orion is unique. It's cool. We're going to make it through. We got some challenges. But we've got a really cool team, and we got people up here that make no money doing this. That we're just here because we love this town, and we want to work together and, and make it the greatest possible place it could be. Challenges are out there, but you know what? We're going to get through it. We always do, and we will in this as well.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Rutt?
Just a clarifying comment. We do make $10 a meeting, in full disclosure. And council members have the option to turn it back to the village or not, and I'll be full disclosure. I take that money and I do something fun for my kids because I miss a lot of hours with my kids being up here. So, just wanted to clarify that. It's basically no money, capped at $360 a year. In case you're wondering if we have extra meetings, we are capped.
And I've never seen a check because I give mine to the Kids and Cops program, so, I mean, it was, I've just looked at this as a volunteer, and I, and I really honestly, the heart of everybody here is, everybody here's to volunteer, so there.
Okay. For me, I just want to mention lake level tonight. Lake level was seven inches last Thursday with the intention of an inch and a half drop per day each day after that, which makes it roughly about 12 inches right now. And the DPW is monitoring and watching that flow, and the intentions are to be down a total of 28 inches by October 17th. And I see the director nodding his head in accuracy of my statement, so that is a continuation. And be careful, everybody out there. It's down already. If you haven't moved, you got to pay attention. The last thing I have is, again, I'm going to apologize, but I need to do this. There's no sandbagging. It was 4 o'clock this afternoon, and there was, there was no intention of sandbagging somebody. It was reported that Nancy Mosier was not going to be here tonight. Sorry. Anyways, that's not the intention. And I apologize to you, Mr. Gukowski, because I know that that's not, we did not sandbag. So, that's it for me tonight, and then I do have the manager's report to read. Greens Park cameras and lights installation will be delayed until next spring. We're looking at alternative ways for this project. Elect coat for the bubblers will be completed soon. Village Hall painting is complete. Looks good. We are currently bidding Meeks Park Bridge Installation, preparing for specs for North Shore Drainage and the dwarf plans for shovel-ready projects, which are awarded funds. Lake drawdown, we are complying with permit. Drawdown is on schedule. Received an email from Eagle indicating that there may be a problem with the drawdown rate and/or the date. We started the drawdown. Our permit says that we are to start on or after September 19th. We start September 27th. We are drawing down two inches per day, and are 13 inches. We will be at 28 inches by next Monday, the 17th. We can be at this level no later than October 31, and the lake level increase to the winter level by November 8th. Two of the three most sharey projects have been approved by the Planning Commission, the PUD for Starboard, and the site plan are in the pipeline. Art Watson and several residents from Lake Street met with Wes and I Monday to discuss helping with the removal of knotweed and cleaning up the access area at the end of Claire Street. These are volunteers. They have the right to do it if they would like to clean and maintain the area. Wes indicated that we can supervise these volunteers and have a professional do the herbicide. We received a call from, and a visit by two residents from the end of the street, and they want to be notified when any activity will take place in the area. The village applied for a grant from Oakland County this year for removal of knotweed for several areas, and were not awarded a grant. And dangers of Japanese knotweed, which is at the end of Claire Street, which we're just kind of discussing about having residents remove it. The World Conservation Union lists knotweed as one of the world's worst invasive species. Knotweed forms dense thickets where no other plants can grow, which changes the soil chemistry. Its strong roots can grow through concrete pavement and foundations, destroying buildings, roads, and other structures because knotweed harms property values and is difficult to control. It is important to take quick action to control young, small infestions, infestations. Cutting and applying glyphosate herbicide inside the hollow knotweed stems can control small infestations. Cutting alone does not control knotweed. It may make it worse. Herbicide must be applied after cutting to reach the roots directly and kill the plant. Every stem, stem must be treated to kill the plant. Cut the green. Knotweed stalks one joint above the ground, and use a stick or screwdriver to puncture any membrane inside the hollow stem. Put herbicide on the cut surface and inside the hollow stem. Any long shoots that respout the flowering spring can be treated the same way. All cut materials should be bagged and set to landfill, not composted, because dumb pieces can regrow. And it's actually a very invasive species. I had recommended that it be handled by a licensed contractor, not a neighborhood group, but we'll see where that goes. I do have one other thing I forgot. This is for the community. This is the Review Magazine. It features other communities. This is from October 2022. And I just want to mention, I know people have said that the council says, or the village manager has said, that one of the ways we're going to get some of these infrastructure improvements done is by grants. And that's all they keep saying, but this is important. This is Water Infrastructure, American Rescue Plan, and Bipartisan Infrastructure Law Funds that go through the State Revolving Fund. These funds have the potential to help communities make a significant step forward toward more sustainable, safe, and efficient water systems. It's being allocated through the State Revolving Fund, the SRF, and they're looking for, or mentioning that governments need to apply to, to be considered for ARP and Bill funds within the SRF process. For communities that are not currently in fiscal year 2023 application cycle and intend to apply, must be submitted by November 1st of this year to be considered for 2024 at the very... At the very least, submitting an intent to apply opens the door towards eligibility for these federal infrastructure dollars and allows a community to have a choice to move forward for the full application. There's a lot of money out there. If you haven't heard that, there's a lot of money out there that they're distributing. And it gives us the way to apply, again, forwarding this to our staff. And we look forward to continuing to find ways to help our community succeed with all that we've got going on. That's it for me tonight. Entertaining motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
All those in favor, please indicate. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Means adjourned. Thank you very much.